I'm sorry. So like, just me. We do. And we're like, not. We try. Spongy. This is. That's terrorists. Yeah. Please.
One. One. Good job.
That thing. You know. Yeah. No, I. Sorry. I mean, I should turn that right street.
Yeah.
I wasn't on the phone. But um, I have. Have the resolution. For the road vacation.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah. It sent me yesterday.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys want to. Or probably just kind of. She was up to you, they only had just come some. Yeah, it sounds good. Get that one for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think like she had last week was pretty.
Yeah. Yeah. Where are we doing? Do we know? I'm not sure. I haven't seen. It's not. It wasn't on the one out. I'm wondering if I should put that. Is it airport? Well, I think maybe we try. It's shot. Shot. Whatever you guys want to do. I'll have this on. They got. Yes. Oh, they're actually fancy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Walter.
So. We're gonna be in this and put us right up. It's not that's what our. Sounds like we're ready to race. I'm pleased to have you.
Tracy. See you right there.
There's mine.
Oh. All together.
Just we're gonna keep the one on. About. The money. The other two.
What about the money?
Progress to.
As part of financials?
Yes. Don't move from history.
We've got. I still have. Which are dead. I think it's great. That's a lot of great. Yes. Yeah. Hi, you're. If I'm being. Thank you. Some three. On, you got him.
We are young people. Fringe.
Christine. Close the shop. You got. She got. You got. Who called? For today. Now, she. We were not. Today. Hopefully she should. I'm coming to these paintings now. Sixteen. About how long I. I'm very glad that I still.
Sure. Yeah.
The engine. Thank you. Numbers change on? Um, yeah. Okay. Get off. The rest are coming. That cop here is not working. And the one is not stable. So they're running. Carrying state. Agendas are coming. Have it for you as soon as possible.
Morning, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Play the Legion.
Play. Play. Since America. And to the Republic. From which it's asked. When the nation. Under God. Into the world. Whether it is.
Today's prayer. Holy Week prayer. Almighty Father, I thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus Christ, who rose from the dead and redeemed humankind. Fill us with the fire of the Holy Spirit that we may be faithful disciples, enthusiastic witnesses of our faith. Hallelujah. Christ is risen. He has risen indeed. Amen. Linda, you got to start. The minutes. Commissioners Office requesting the board approve next fifteen minutes of meeting April first, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
So good.
Mr. So Larry.
Hi.
Mr. Branson.
Yes.
Good morning. Adrian Gordon, Commissioners Office. Um, today's financials include a supplemental in the approach in the Airport Construction Fund in preparation for an expenditure for the building of new tea hangers. There's a cash transfer from the General Fund Commissioners' miscellaneous levy reimbursement account to the JFS Children's Services Transfer and Revenue Account for the first half. Children's Services Levy Reduction Payment. There's an encumbrance of travel requests from the Clerk of Courts Office to attend the June, July, August, September, and October twenty twenty five Ohio Clerk of Courts Association Meeting. Among the vouchers is twenty eight thousand fifty five dollars from Job and Family Services to Preston Ford for a twenty twenty five Ford Escape Replacement Vehicle, replacing a two thousand fourteen Jeep Patriot, which will be auctioned, and ninety eight thousand one hundred forty three dollars from Water Resources to the Ohio Water Development Authority for the McFarland Waste Bar Treatment Plan Improvement Stat Admin Expenses.
Thanks.
With the motion.
Mr. Spindler. Mr. Linda. Hi.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Item three. Good morning.
Good morning. Chuck Walder, Jack County Auditor's Office. Frank Antonucci, ADP. Um, I'm here today to clarify a series of questions and or comments that the board has expressed in the past couple of three months. Um, and for some, I apologize that some of this may be repetitive or redundant. I know each of you as commissioners served in different capacities on different boards. And as, um, as such, you have inside knowledge, so to speak, about why things occur and the background of those things. So I'm hoping to clarify for the board's benefit that you're all on the same page with some of that, some of these matters. Um, the first topic that I'd like to clarify is the subject has come up repeatedly on ADP salaries. And to put things in perspective, I'd like to, um, remind everyone that in January first of twenty twenty four, so a little over a year and three months ago, um, this board, um, through a resolution, um, I believe Linda was involved in this activity, uh, transferred archives and records under ADP. And in doing so, I know Commissioner Dvorak, um, who served on the Archives and Records Board with me for many years, uh, recognized and understood that one of the challenges with, um, the Archives and Records Facility in general was that, um, the payments that we were, um, accruing and the salaries that we were paying for people doing that work was, um, let's just say substandard. Um, so we did do an immediate salary review upon that falling under ADP. And I'm happy to report we did find they were competitive. Unfortunately, they were competitive with the fast food industry. So as you could imagine, um, my concerns really centered around how can we retain these employees? How can we fill vacancies when we get them? And how do we build morale so that people want to come to work and do a good job and work full day? So I immediately authorized the increase of salaries in that segment of ADP to become competitive with the, the market. So I'm happy to report that since doing that, um, I, I rate their performance stellar. I have received zero phone calls, which is my measurement of, of performance. Zero phone calls of complaint. Um, I have talked to other elected officials who are using the services of Archives and Records. My own department, um, less than two years ago, had three to four hundred boxes of records that were scheduled to be shredded, that were not being shredded. I'm happy to report that those matters have all been cleared and cleaned, much due to the uh, systems that were put in place by Linda when she was serving in the capacity of director. But it carried forward with the new, new team and group. So I'm happy to report that that's working. Um, regarding ADP technical personnel and their salaries. So I, again, this is something that I am very near and dear to because that was my profession for almost twenty five years. Um, ADP's technical people are paid under market. And I've compared them to both other local governments who are competitors of ours. I've compared them also to the private sector. And by far, the private sector would could offer any of our employees much more money uh, with adequate benefits and pull them away from us, causing us to have to reinvest in the education and training of those personnel. That's something that I am concerned about daily. I know you all, uh, feel that same pain in other areas of government. And as public servants, our job is to balance that, that, um, the payment scale to being able to retain competent employees and perform the, the duties that we have to perform for the people. So, um, you know, it, in that regard, I'm happy to advise you that, you know, although we believe they are paid, um, below market, we do believe we have a team that is motivated and is addressing concerns related to issues surrounding the county. And, and I don't see their, their need in the county to be diminishing. Um, based on cyber threats that we are seeing daily, um, as recently as yesterday, um, to the variety of other technological improvements that are being made, including AI. Um, our requirements for these IT professionals is going to continue to grow. We, we could have personal opinions, which we believe that maybe we don't want that to happen, but unfortunately, that is not, not in my wheelhouse to be able to control. Um, for me, the, the IT issue is, um, I guess, less, um, concerning from a standpoint of it. If I'm used to IT, I'm used to technology, I embrace it. But I appreciate and understand not everybody does that. Um, so I, I guess, I, I am concerned about one item, and that is, you know, the ADP Board, um, does, uh, review the salaries of all the employees and the functions of the employees. And we come annually before the, but the Board of County Commissioners. And, and our, our requests and our budget are vetted. And I personally have experienced that they have been vetted for a given year multiple times, which I'm not complaining about. But I, I do find a slight disconnect when it's selective. And so what I would encourage this body to consider is it's not just ADP whose salaries should be vetted or whose expenses should be vetted. There are other agencies that you appoint people to. There are people within the county that serve and draw money from the General Fund who frankly have been able to waive their budget hearings on an annual basis. Yet they can invoke any salary increases that they deem they think is appropriate without any oversight and without any accountability to you or the taxpayers. So I think selecting one department to hyper-focus on while you're certainly willing, able to do that, I think, you know, all doesn't really serve the public to its full extent when you allow other agencies get away with not having to do that. The second topic that I want to discuss is probably one that's near and dear to everyone is that, and that's the AV equipment in this building. So I, I am a bit perplexed as to fact that there's still apparently seems to be confusion as to how we got here. Um, because it's not, it, I, I think it's been widely publicized of why the AV equipment is in the state it's in. Fundamentally, that all of the decisions of this AV equipment in this building were made outside of ADP. ADP was not integral to the decision-making process of building this building. And I'm not here to cast dispersions on that process. I'm just here because I don't want history to be rewritten to all of a sudden assert that ADP somehow placed these monitors on the wall and we designed the back, back end of those monitors. And now we're being held to account for why they don't perform. I think we all know why they don't perform. Um, somewhere in the system, whether it was in the VOCC office or its staff or the owner's rep or the vendors, they made specific decisions. And those decisions may or may not have been in our best interest, but they certainly were not vetted by the technology house within the county. And even though those things in this building that were vetted by ADP, what we have found was when they were purchased, they were purchased by, after being changed. So I'll give you a good example. You know, we had a longstanding battle with the Commissioners a couple of years ago over the key card access system. And I have had the opportunity now to review all of the records that ADP has, the board has reviewed and approved. And it turns out that the ADP Board did approve a key card system. It just didn't approve the one that was installed. We approved a key card system that was cloud-based. And the cloud-based would have enabled every elected official and every hiring authority to have independent control over the access of those key card systems and do so without ADP intervention. Unfortunately, that's not what was purchased and that's not what was installed. We got what we got. And, and I would rather move forward to how do we fix that? How do we make it workable rather than continue to continue to try to revisit history to say, well, why wasn't ADP involved in that? I don't know. My involvement with, with this building really started when I, after construction occurred and I reviewed the prints. And I found that there was no facility designed in this building for ADP. So I approached the Jaga Public Health. And I worked with the Jaga County Health to negotiate some of their space for a minimal staff of ADP people. That's how it evolved. That's not the right way of designing a building, and I think we all recognize that. But unfortunately, that's what happens sometimes when you do major projects. So I guess I, I, I want to make sure it's clear that that particular component, while we're willing to fix, we don't own the problem. We will own the solution. And I'm, I'm here to tell you, our intention is to dig into this, but we have to weigh that investment of resources with all of the other things that ADP has on their plate throughout the entire county. And we have to prioritize. So everybody in this building has lived with these, these, um, pieces of equipment in all of their, their facilities not being operational and certainly not operational to the degree that we want. The third item I want to discuss is the live streaming and its costs. And I, I guess, just for a matter of clarity, I just want to point out that prior to January of this year, I have never been approached by the Board of County Commissioners to, um, propose, put in place, or recommend a live streaming solution. As a matter of fact, the feedback that I've gotten from the Board of County Commissioners prior to January this year was they did not want live streaming. So it was very clear to me that that was the path going down. And I think it was even evidenced by the equipment that was placed in this building, even though not within ADP's oversight and review. Even the very equipment that was placed in this particular space was not equipped to do live streaming. I think you've all said that in various meetings. So clearly, there was no intention of doing live streaming. When Commissioner Brakey approached ADP and myself, asking what are her options? We provided a series of options, some of which were temporary and some would be permanent, but not immediate. This board elected to take on the temporary and not an immediate solution rather than the permanent and longer-term solution. However, you asked us to then investigate the permanent solution, and we've committed to do that by the, by the July timeframe. And I, I think, and I want to speak for Frank, but I think we are on target to do that. And, and so I want to go through the cost associated with that live streaming. So as a comparative basis for you, our experience with YouTube, um, live streaming is very minimal in the county. The most, um, the most similar approach to doing this was our, our providing live streaming for, for the Department of Health. And that was done, um, through a request by them. They wanted live streaming and they wanted YouTube capable. We outsourced that work. So we hired an outside firm that specializes in that work. And the cost to ADP for performing that was approximately a thousand dollars a meeting. So when Commissioner Brakey and the board decided we want to do live stream meeting, I didn't think that was a cost-effective alternative. So I asked Frank, can we do it in-house? And he said, yes, we can. It may be awkward at first, but we're going to learn. And I think the advantage of learning is it saves money in the long term. So currently, with two people doing the live streaming, it costs the county approximately a hundred and fifty dollars a meeting. So we're already much less expensive than what we, what we were providing, the almost identical service to the Department of Health. Now, the reason we have two people is, and again, we're, we're kind of micromanaging the actions of ADP to some extent, but I understand the question. The reason we have two people doing this work is because I believe in redundancy. I have, and that comes from the auditor world. You don't have a single point of failure. People get sick, people take vacations, people have other commitments they have to take on. And when they do that, what I don't want is to show up here one day and at nine thirty, especially today, and not have somebody running the live stream. And so that was a commitment I made that I would provide that service. And I thought the best option would be to have duality of function so that in the event that somebody couldn't make it, somebody could back it up. And because this is a learning experience for ADP, I want them both to go through the process and see where the hurdles are so that when we give you a permanent solution, we have less issues to contend with. Now, that, that's a business decision that I made. I made it on your behalf. But I don't think, um, I don't think that particular material cost is, um, is significant enough to warrant not performing that function in that manner. So, um, based on the alternative being a thousand dollars per meeting. The, the last thing that, that I want to address is something that was, is very concerning to me. This is probably, uh, the impetus of why I, I felt important that I come to the. Uh, the impetus of why I I felt important that I come to the meeting personally. And and that is to um, I I've learned through watching the YouTube. Um, obsession late at night when I have nothing else better to do. Yeah, can't sleep, which is often um, that that Commissioner Spitalary raised a concern with his email. And that of former Commissioner Lenins and that of administrator Jerry Morgan, former administrator Jerry Morgans. And and I will tell you, that is a huge alarm flag for me. Anybody who asserts that there is some anomaly going on with their email that is residing on our infrastructure is a category one for me. It it's no different than anybody calls in and says, I think I I clicked on a virus. And to learn about it in the manner that I learned about it is was very disconcerting. Um, it caused me to immediately go to the parties at A D P and say, what is going on? What what, who has access to this stuff? What what reports have been made? What have we investigated? What is the incident escalation and why haven't we heard about it? And to be honest with you, I was shocked. There are no reports in A D P, not from anyone. Not from any of the three parties who have claimed to have this experience until the YouTube presentation. And and I guess I I felt I feel like I'm at a disadvantage. How does anyone investigate something that must have happened last year or before? Because two of the three people who have this issue are no longer here at the county. And those circumstances can't be happening. And yet I'm dealing with the equivalent of old milk in a refrigerator. Right? It never gets fresher, it never gets sweeter and nobody wants to drink it. So I don't know what exactly we can delve into and discover at this point. But but there are multiple ways that people can report incidents that involve a potential breach to our network. One is A D P. But there are investigative units at a variety of other resources that are available to county people. That is the prosecutor's office, the sheriff, any other law enforcement agency, Homeland Security, the Attorney General. They all have avenues where potential violations of anybody's privacy can be challenged and investigated. I am unaware of any of that being done at the time of the incident. Doing so now is very difficult. So I I wish I had better news for you regarding that. And if that is continuing to be experienced, I am the first one to to recommend. Of calling in experts who can interrogate it. We did something very similar. When we believed a wastewater treatment plant was under risk. We recommended a company called Dragos, who is an independent firm that does nothing but I T triage. And they will get to the root of the problem. They're very expensive, admittedly. But if the goal is to be safe and protected, then you have to spend the money in order to accomplish that. So I hope I've answered the four topics that were, I guess, high on my mind or that I recognize as being repeat questions. I'm happy to answer any other questions or have Frank address any details that I have not yet yet done for you.
Did you have any questions, Commissioner? Um, so one question I had is. How many people and who at A D P even has the ability to access individual employees' emails? Like if you had a bad actor at A D P, you know, would they be able to do this sort of um conduct that's being alleged?
Yeah, I'll have, Frank is more intimate with the details, but because N A I don't have any access, they they barely trust me with a pen, but.
Not true. Um, yeah, so uh, this would not be a great parallel for you necessarily. It would be for Commissioner Spitalary. Um, we treat our email accessing control similar to what law enforcement treats leads as. I don't know if you have any familiarity, certainly you have familiarity with leads. Yeah, so you know.
You can't look up your ex-girlfriend.
You can't, you could go to jail.
Can't, can't. So we, A, we restrict access, then we require training and N D A's non-disclosure agreements and whatnot for individuals who have access. And then obviously we limit to official use, so, right, so it's the same paradigm that leads uses and we have the benefit of working with the sheriff's office. On some of their leads and spillman access. And so we're actually able to use the same sort of similar paradigm to what we do with that. So in terms of A D P, we have a system of check and balances on any email access. Um, we have two people in the uh, security department and two people in the data department. And they're the only two that have it, they check and balance on each other. So for instance, Chuck and I have the same level of user access that everybody up here has, like we don't have any access to any of that stuff. Um, so we have it with the technicians who are specifically trained to do that, including the domain administrators. And then we have a next level down, so we have a series of checks within there, within the separate departments under A D P that cross check with that. Now, to the point of the similarity with leads is we do logging, right?
That was gonna be my.
Yeah, so anytime anybody access the system, it's logs, yeah.
Yeah.
Significant logging on.
So I mean, is that a public record? Like if somebody wanted to check like, hey, I think my email was accessed, you know.
In terms of logging.
It may be, there may be some redaction to the log, there may be some, for example, if credentials were entered or anything of that nature, but yeah, I I mean. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but there are, there's access to those records like any other public document.
Yeah.
In terms of my experience with people having questions about their email access, the biggest issue we have run into. Is when people share their credentials or passwords, which is why, please don't do that ever. People write it down on sticky notes, people share it with other people. We see that a lot with elected officials with support and so whatnot. It's like, we can't be doing that. And then like, oh, somebody checked my email on my calendar and changed things, and then we pull the thread back and find out, well, an employee intentionally went in there and did something. Then it's okay, it's still not okay, though. That's typically where we see those issues.
Okay.
Though we, I mean, based on the training and the information we've been putting out the past few years, we rarely ever see any issues of. Um, unauthorized password sharing or anything that I know of right now.
Okay, so to reiterate, neither one of you can access any of our emails.
No, just my own.
Yeah.
We have the same level of access that you have.
Okay.
Not for your email.
Yeah. Yeah, and to be honest with you, um, I mean, I've I'm sure people all envision us, you know. Somewhere huddled in a corner, monitoring people's email, but I I have much better things to do with my time, as I'm sure Frank does. And and the reality is, you know, there is risk inherent with anything, any document that is put anywhere in. On the internet or on or in space. Our our email is in internet. So, you know, that's why we are so concerned with people sharing things like passwords or letting. Unauthorized people who were not assigned that particular login to have access into their account. I I think that was a common practice in the past, one that we have tried to break. And I think we've broken most of, I think M F A has helped us. When people have to have dual authentication, it it kind of makes it harder to share password, but not not impossible. So really, the largest risk to getting into it is people sharing their their information on how to log in. That's the biggest risk. Um, you know, but that's not a A D P function, that's a user function, although we can train people in why you shouldn't be doing that.
And the second biggest risk tends to be individual user compromise where they click on a link of some sort. But again, we're seeing less of that, users are getting much smarter and um. We're getting more false positives and people turning over emails that they're concerned about, which is good. Like, oh, actually, this email appears to be clean and was legitimate. That's better, it's it's more work, but it's better people are having much less clicking issues with that. Um, so my bigger concern is always the outside sort of thing. Um, so we have three different levels of email security that we pay for that are redundant, redundant, redundant. In terms of ensuring that outside attackers don't have access to the network like that. And then even within there, we pay for the higher level of Microsoft licensing, including the government type licensing, the autopilot. Extra pieces, um, just to ensure uh the confidentiality of email. We understand there's a significant amount of HIPAA information and P I I in email. Um, and that can't just be sort of segregated off within there, it's just all throughout a lot of people's email in the county.
Any other questions?
Just when I'm on the computer, I I need help all the time, so, you know.
You may wanna, may not want to say that in public.
And every time, and every time they come in, they're very helpful, your your technicians and things and uh. And they always, when I plug in my code, they either leave the room and let me get in there and this and that, it's very uh, very precise. So, and I appreciate.
Well, they they do have, and I think this goes to the reporting aspect, we have a protocol. So if if we believe there is a suspected nefarious actor on our backbone. Or reported to us that somebody else thinks there's a nefarious actor, we have a process that that is invoked. And that process um is very rigid. We had an event uh just yesterday. Um, it was not through an A D P partner, it was through a. Uh, I don't want to be careful, I don't want to identify the the group. It was another government agency, um, a fire department within Jogga County. Who um, has to get into a county system through the sheriff's department called Spillman. And they do that in order to get certain G I S data to be able to route to events. And know directions of sending fire trucks and ambulances. And when they log in, our backbone starts to interrogate that connection. And looks to see behind the curtain, is there anything on the backend that could be causing causing any harm? And it identified that that computer had a potential, um, which turned out to be true. A potential virus which involved um ransomware. And it was on three of their machines. And so we had to sever that connection, we had to block them from access. Because the risk is through that door, if you will, into Spillman. It could have gotten into the sheriff's system and then spread through the rest of the county without proper detection and isolation. So there's an example where as soon as we detected that event, we had a we had a protocol. I was, I received literally within two hours of the event, a formal written um report on what happened. And and what the experience was and what the remedy currently is. So I'm not saying we solved it in two hours, but I was made aware and I knew it had been escalated to a level. That all of the eyes were on it. And that's probably in running A D P, that's probably our mutual biggest hurdle. How do you budget for that? How do you put a dollar in how many of those you're going to get? When you're going to get them and how much it's going to cost to resolve? So that's where I think the unknown hits, but I think every department has those to some degree. Maybe not dealing with cyber, but dealing with some other anomaly. We just happen to see that in the arena of cyber, it's a daily occurrence now. And I don't think it's going away. I I I don't want to be that person in the paper that has to write a check for seven figures to get your data back. I I don't. So that unfortunately, there's a security and an insurance cost that that is required in order to prevent that. Or at least reduce your risk. And I want to thank Chrissy for putting us early on the agenda. I have an event I have to go to at eleven o'clock, so. I I'm glad I could make this and I I. That's also the reason why I often have people here from my office that are, you know, attending on my behalf is that, you know. As you know, we all have multiple strings pulling at us on a daily basis. And, you know, in in my world, I I I have a lot of duties that I have to pay attention to. And I want to know firsthand if there's something that I need to address or something they can address on my behalf. I want to have that available for the commissioners. I know oftentimes I've watched these videos and you've asked Frank regularly in the back of the room, is is that true, Frank? You know, I I think there's a, there's a value to that, there's a value to the taxpayer and there's a value certainly to this board. And I don't want to do anything that would prevent them from coming and therefore cost you more time and the taxpayers more money. Where we could have avoided that by having somebody attend a meeting for an hour or two and and pop in and out if they have to.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for the clarification and details.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jay Hager with the Engineers Office presenting items four through seven. Uh, item number four, the Engineers Office is requesting the board award the bid to Reiniac Paving Incorporated. For the reconstruction of Butternut Road, County Highway twenty one. Including the replacement of structure twenty one dash zero zero three two. And the resurfacing of sections A through C in Munson Township. In the amount of one million nine hundred ninety one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars as they presented the lowest and best bid. And the bid bond submitted shall serve as the performance bond for this project. Questions?
So one thing I noticed is these, the bidders, I mean, they came out very close in the end, but the individual items were like all over the place. Like some of those variances were, I don't know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars they were off. Is that, do you typically see that sort of?
It depends. Um, some some of the items, the lump sum items can vary depending on how the. Particular company wants to put their bids together.
Yeah.
They may, the lump sums are paid in full.
Right.
Rather than paid by the quantity used.
Yeah.
Um, so that's kind of like a guarantee. Sometimes they use that as a a tool in their bidding, but. Uh, usually they're a little closer than that, there there were some uh, unique bid items in that particular project.
Yeah, it's almost like you wish you could uh pick and choose some of the items because there's such a such a swing between the two. But that was just something I noticed that I thought was was interesting. Um, I'll make the motion to approve for.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item number five, the Engineers Office is requesting the board approve and execute. Unit price contract for Grayline with Grayline Incorporated for the replacement. Culverts on various roads in Munson Township, the amount of one hundred ninety five thousand five hundred twenty five, five hundred twenty one dollars and fifteen cents.
Um, I move to approve number five.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, six and seven are new uh. Request for action for projects uh replacing two bridges. Item number six, Engineers Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution twenty five dash zero six six. To order the replacement of Haskins Road Bridge, Structure one nine one dash three point two one, Bainbridge Township. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet. And further, this resolution request sets the bid opening date uh on Bid Express. For Friday, May second at ten ten A M. Notice of this bid will be advertised on April seventeenth and on the county website.
So.
Second. Mr. Spiller.
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, item number seven, uh, again, to request the. Uh, board approve and execute resolution twenty five dash zero six seven. For the replacement of Riverview uh Drive Bridge, Structure three eighty dash zero zero point three one. And also Bainbridge Township. Resolution asks to approve the title sheet as well as set a bid opening on Bid Express. Uh, for May second at ten twelve A M. And notice of the bid opening will be advertised on April seventeenth and on the county website.
I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Right.
Hi.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like anyone's here. Item number eight, the Common Fleece Court Juvenile and Probate Division is requesting the board approve and execute. The certification request to the county auditor, request to the Board of Commissioners quarterly use of county credit cards. Pursuant to O R C three oh one, one two seven for the year twenty twenty five, Order Two. For the Jogga Credit Union Visa.
I move to approve.
Second. Yes.
Morning, Glenn.
Morning. My name's Glenn Verdick from Jogga County Maintenance Department.
Morning.
Good morning. Uh, number nine, the maintenance department, we're requesting the West Jogga Senior Center. Uh, the boiler out there, and he's twenty five plus years old, so we're. Had a little bit of problems last year or this year with it, so we're trying to get ahead of the game on that and get that replaced.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hey.
Mr. Verdick. I.
Yes.
Uh, number ten, this is uh, we're trying to do an agreement with Paul Davis Restoration. Uh, we use this uh service contract for when we have an emergency. Something like uh, if we have a water leak or something happens to one of the buildings, we can automatically call them in and get this situation. Uh, we had this contract last year and we didn't use anything on it. So it's something that's, we just put in place, so we're not running around at the last second.
That's what I was going to ask, how much do you spend on in a typical year? So last year was nothing, and then what about prior years, do you find?
Uh, the year before, we had uh. Uh, it was either the elevator or we had, and then the year before, we had a water. Uh, heating system freeze and bust. So they came in and did the cleanup for that too, so. Uh, two years ago, we had the, I want to say it was the elevator at the Opera House where we had some problems there, so we had to get them in and get that all cleaned up.
Get that person out of the elevator.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve ten.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hey.
Mr. Verdick. I.
Yes.
Number eleven is uh, looking ahead, uh, we've been having problems with this elevator, uh, I should call it a lift out at the Patterson Center. So uh, we're just trying to get somebody in, uh, get this updated. We got some water problems up there and get them to look at this whole thing and see what we got to do, if we got to improve any A D A. Uh, regulations and the whole works out there.
So I thought that was just a one floor building, is that?
That has a. That has a basement in it too.
Oh, okay.
In their basement, they have a very large um, meeting room.
I see.
We call it so. Uh, they do a lot of training down there.
Okay.
Uh, the OSU folks and everybody in that.
Okay.
Four H activities in the basement as well.
I was so confused. I'm like, why do we need a wheelchair lift?
That would help me get up in the attic and do some work.
Yeah. Uh, so what are we looking at for a total cost for this? If this is just essentially the design work?
This is just the design to get count, get out there and figure it all out and then give us a rough quote on that.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have any like?
I I don't at this moment.
Matt would always give me a rock number.
Well, and this was Matt, Matt had started this, so uh, I have many, many notes and
Okay, that's fair.
Everything from when he left and uh, he did leave in good standing and left me. We've had many meetings last week of trying to get caught up on everything. So I am running around these these last couple of days and these next couple of weeks uh, trying to do interviews. So we're are in the process of doing interviews for for his replacement.
Great. You got some some resumes, huh? It sounds like.
Yes.
Okay, well, good, good. All right, I'll make a motion to approve eleven.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi, thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about this one, Christie? No? Adrian? Number twelve?
Eleven.
Your real property.
Oh, um. Adrian, Commissioner's Office, um, so I I received a word from the uh, auditor's um um, property um, office about the uh, property surrounding the courthouse that was uh, transferred to the commissioners. It was previously exempted under ownership of the city. So now we are just applying for that same um, exemption from property tax under the county's ownership.
Okay.
So that's all that.
I was wondering, because I looked it up and I saw it was already exempt
Yes.
From the property tax. When did that transfer happen?
It was last, I think it was towards the end of last year at sometime. I'm not sure exactly when.
I think it's.
I think it says it on the form. If you have the form.
It's it was B C though, because I'm like, I don't remember. How before Carolyn?
Before.
Um, it was two twenty two, twenty twenty four.
Yeah. So it's that working last year.
Just for clarification, how we got to this point was when we started negotiating with the city of Chardon. Since conception, the courthouse property was always on the city's property during negotiations. You know, we said that we'd like to have owned the property that's underneath the courthouse, and so that's why we're to this point.
I see. Okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and it will revert back to the city if it ever gets used for anything other than a courthouse.
Yeah.
So, so it is a, it does have a provision in it for that, so.
Understood.
But as long as it's a courthouse, it's county property, you know.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve twelve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Hi.
Yes. Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Item thirteen is based on the discussion that we had last week about amending the public comment policy to uh, make the amount of time of visit available to each individual to three minutes instead of two. That's the only thing that's changed.
And that would be effective with this meeting? Is that what it's saying?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve thirteen.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Good. Should we talk about the road vacation now before we get into the airport issues?
Sure.
That's all right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What? Oh, yeah. Yes, you're all looking at me. Um, Laura LaChappelle at the Jagga County Prosecutor's Office.
Tracy Solikowitz with the Jagga County Engineers Office.
Um, so at the last meeting of the board, um, just to just to summarize, the commissioners obviously held the public hearing enclosed the public hearing and indicated that um, they would be making a deci- a decision at a later time and and um, apparently that's going to occur today. And Mr. Lee is in the audience as well. Um, so I I think um, it may be helpful for the board, uh, obviously, the board is going to be taking a vote, but prior to the board taking a vote, maybe to give us an idea of which way they're leaning on this. Um, and then I'm happy to um, provide a summary of a potential resolution that the board can execute um, to provide a basis for that decision.
I was comfortable with the last version you had emailed me yesterday.
Okay. All right. Um, so I I guess at this point in time, um, um, we have a, we have a potential resolution here um, to vacate the Sand Hill Trail Road. Um, and just to, just to give us a little bit of history here, um, obviously, the Board of County Commissioners received a resolution from Munson Township requesting that they that they vacate Sand Hill Trail. Um, the board did pass a resolution, um, that they believe that the public convenience and welfare may require the proposed proposed vacation. Obviously, um, the Engineers Office issued a written report and the board held its public hearing, as I indicated, on April eighth um, and heard evidence uh, any evidence upon the issue of the necessity of the vacation. Um, and in the board's resolution, it's necessary for the board to identify the abutting property owners. Um, and as indicated in the hearing, um, Jessica Ass and Mathias A. Lee are the sole abutting property owners. Um, and we are dealing with, I believe, seventeen parcels that abut the proposed um, vacation of Sand Hill Trail. Um, as the sole abutting property owners, um, that it it appears that they will also be the only parties benefited by the improvement um, and the transfer of the acreage, um, the Sand Hill Trail acreage. Um, as as indicated in the in the public hearing, Sand Hill Trail is a paper road and has never been physically constructed, improved, or maintained in any way by the township or used as a road. Um, evidence was put in that no utilities have been installed on, over, or under Sand Hill Trail. And Sand Hill Trail has been abandoned by the township and not used for a period of over twenty one years. And there's no reason to believe that Sand Hill Trail will be used as a road anytime in the future. Um, and we, evidence was also provided that the Lees requested Munson Munson Township pursue the vacation of Sand Hill Trail as they are actively seeking to consolidate all the lots abutting Sand Hill Trail. Um, and for all intents and and purposes, it does not appear that uh, well, the um, it does not appear to be of sufficient importance, the vacation of the road under these circumstances to cause compensation and damages to be paid from the treasury. Um, and the board will proceed with the road vacation if compensation and damage it if if the compensation and damages that are that that I'll allude to um, are paid or such part thereof as the board deems reasonable and just is paid to the Lees as the sole property owners who will be benefited by the road vacation. Um, and this is based on a provision in the O R C. Um, in this, in this situation, obviously, the um, the Lees being the the sole property owners who could potentially be damaged by the road vacation are also the sole property owners who could be benefited by the road vacation. So um, it's recommended that the board determine based on consideration of all the facts and evidence presented at the hearing and the payment of that that the payment of no compensation by the Lees as the sole landowners of lands uh, within the vicinity who will be benefited would be reasonable and just under the circumstances as the Lees are, as I indicated, as the Lees are the only abutting property owners and would therefore be paying compensation for damages, if any, to themselves. Um, and again, um, it's recommended that no damages have been sustained by the Lees as primary access to the Lees house is via a drive access along the westwardly property line of their property. That would be one oh two six one Mayfield Road. And um, vacation of Sand Hill Trail will not cause the Lees to lose this primary access. Sand Hill Trail, um, as as indicated earlier, has never been physically constructed or improved and never used as a road. Um, and again, on the basis that um, the Lees approached the township to request the road vacation and are actively seeking to consolidate the lots. Um, and will have bring John to the road. And the transfer of the vacated Sand Hill Trail acreage to the Lees will increase the amount and overall value of acreage currently held by the Lees. And the public has an interest in the utilization of undeveloped and abandoned property. Um, and it's also recommended that the um, board find that as indicated by the Engineers Office, that the vacation of the public road right of right of way upon Sand Hill Trail in Munson Township is in the interest of the public convenience and welfare. Um, and as indicated in the Engineers Report, that it's not used to calculate the distribution of auto registration, distribution, fund monies. Um, and um, the O R C, um, any order by the board vacating the road will not extinguish the rights of ingress and egress if any reserved to the Lees as the sole abutting property owners. And the vacation of the road would pass in fee to the Lees subject to all um, to service facility rights, which would be, and this is straight out of the Ohio Revised Code, which would be any permanent easements um, in, over, under the road for any service facilities, any public utilities, any electric cooperatives, um, and also that they would also have the right of ingress and egress to service and maintain those service facilities and the right to trim or remove any tree shrubs, brush, or other obstacles. But it's my understanding there are no utilities
That's correct.
On that street. Um, so as if the board is interested in 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 fact vacating the road, um, um, the the these bases have been included in a resolution, um, that could be signed by the board. Sorry, it's a little lengthy.
But that's okay. It has to be said.
Yep.
Is there a motion on this resolution?
Do we need to read the resolution or?
I can have a motion.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Hi.
Yes.
Um, then the Mylar is in the process of being prepared.
Correct.
So that may come to the board next week for execution and then all the um, all the, the, actually, the record will be sent to the township and they'll have to take action as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to come up? Over there?
Sure.
Yeah.
They have a regular hanging on the line.
Excuse me.
Sorry. That's all right. The number fourteen is the parallel taxiway.
Okay, got it. I'll do that first.
Suffered from the the teenager.
All right.
I said then, the item number fourteen is your regular item regarding the parallel taxiway. I put that on first.
So the Airport Authority is requesting.
Just to stop you, could you um, state your name and title for the record?
Rick Blamer, Airport Authority.
Greg Gilstrom, uh, Airport Authority.
Chipass Airport Authority.
So the Airport Authority is requesting the board approve reimbursement request number one for the taxiway extension construction project specifically to construct uh, parallel taxiway Alpha, including taxiway connectors Alpha one and Alpha two. Uh, construction for the final phase and install taxiway edge lights. Uh, construction final phase of the grant uh, number three dash three nine dash zero zero five four dash zero two eight dash two zero two four for professional services in the amount of thirty six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, where the FAA shares thirty three thousand two hundred and twenty three fifty and O dot in our local match is one thousand eight hundred and forty five and seventy five cents. With that motion.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brink.
Hi.
Yes.
So the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve an encumbrance and expenditure to Giaga County Airport Authority in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars from the airport construction fund for contributing funds toward the construction of a new T hangar at the Giaga County Airport. And Adrian, maybe you could speak again to the question that was raised about how are we doing this when all the approvals aren't done? You could explain that.
Um, my assumption was that number seventeen was going to be done in conjunction with fifteen and sixteen. So.
Adrian, we have a revised agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. First, it's pretty much the action of the rule you were trying to help.
So there's probably confusion about the numbers that Adrian was talking about.
Okay. But just say encumbrance and expenditure, right? Not just the encumbrance.
Yeah, so the way that this would work is if the um, commissioners approve number seventeen, I guess you are assuming or.
Voted from the agenda.
No, I'm just saying, if if she, if they approve the encumbrance and expenditure for the eight hundred thousand dollars, you are basically saying that the Airport Authority has met the requirements that you had for them. And I have, today, I put eight hundred thousand dollars in appropriations in place in the airport construction fund. And then after today, I will transfer eight hundred thousand dollars from the general fund into the airport construction fund. And then we will create an encumbrance and an expenditure and then give the airport the eight hundred thousand dollars to use towards the construction of those new T hangers.
So this is just being step one in in that direction.
But it's only step one if we approve the resolution which we just got this morning.
Right.
So, um, so maybe you gentlemen could go through the revised resolution, the red lines that you made to it and talk about why you made them.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank Linda for helping us. We had several emails going back and forth. Where everyone is trying to get us finished with this. We appreciate that very much. Um, and and uh, we did our best to review it. Our legal counsel reviewed it yesterday. That's why it came out last minute. Um, but basically what uh, if you want to look at the amended resolution first, is that, do you have copies of what we emailed over to you with the red lines?
I do not have that. Uh, I asked you to send me what was approved last night and you sent me the agreement, but.
Yeah, I have a red line. I don't have an executed.
No, no, no.
This is what we sent you last night.
Yeah, I guess I'd ask you, what did you approve? Is that what you approved? Did you, did the Airport Authority approve the amended resolution at your meeting?
Yes.
Or did you just approve the agreement?
Well, I mean, well, if we don't. It's our understanding that this, the resolution is approved by the commissioner. We approve the agreement that approved the resolution.
Okay.
So you, but but your agreement that you approved was based on the amended resolution, not on the resolution we passed.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And and just, I mean, again, this, some, some of this is just advice from our legal counsel. It is connecting the resolution to the agreement where the first page had a couple of red lines, just connecting back to that document. And then if you remember last week, item number three was deleted out, added with compensation. All we did is clean up a couple of numbers where it was, you know, item four rather than, you know, item three rather than item four. Uh, and then it struck out the one with about the four conditions. That's really the resolution. That's what we did.
That the four conditions was was your language, and I don't know what the three conditions or the four conditions are, but we we don't need to get to that because the real red line, of course, that I want to talk about is the most substantive of the red line.
Okay.
You made to the resolution, which you haven't discussed, which is regarding your uh, your affirmation that you have complied and you will comply with the agreement.
With the agreement for the T hangar?
No, with it.
Well, it is.
Agreement between the commissioners and the Airport Authority.
Moving forward, we will agree with the agreement.
Okay, so are you admitting on the record that you have not been complying with the agreement? So then why would you not agree to that?
Because that would open up the door for anybody to find some piece of paper. Because that would open up the door for anybody to find some piece of paper from seven years ago that he might have filed or not filed. And and we want to move forward. Basically, we installed a cure period. In other words, if there's something that is of dissatisfaction to the.
Let's not move on to the cure period. Let's talk about the agreement itself.
Well, the.
With the Commissioners.
What we're trying to prevent here is an oversight on our part turning into an absolute withdrawal of the money. In other words, if we're going to comply with whatever you so wish. All we're asking for.
But only in the future, not what, not who already agreed to the past.
Is is we don't want to allow you to have a gotcha that says, two years ago, you didn't submit some report, therefore, we've got you in violation of the agreement. What we're asking for is a normal cure period where you advise us if we miss something, we'd be happy to comply, and we've got thirty days to.
So that, so that's a separate, but that's a separate provision.
But it's a good faith provision.
So but the provision you're talking about, the cure period, period, that's not what I'm talking about. So that's that's located later in the resolution under item number three. What I'm talking about is your amendment to number two, where it previously said that the authority, I don't have the language in front of me, but essentially, the authority confirms that it has complied and will comply. And you deleted that has complied. And so now it says will comply. So what I, we don't even talk about cure period because we're not there yet. Let's just talk about why you will not promise what you already promised.
Because we don't, we don't know if we're, if we missed something in the past. It's just that simple.
Okay, but you already made that promise. You already executed that agreement. We are currently operating under that agreement. Do you understand that?
I guess I do not.
You, so what would you consider the most important agreements that the Airport Authority operates under?
The the joint agreement between the two parties.
Okay, I would tend to agree with you, but that's probably the number one agreement. So you will not promise that you are following the terms of that agreement.
We are unaware.
Already promised to.
We're simply unaware if we have been linked with something or we didn't file something. So we're just not aware that if you think you're, do the Commissioners think we're missing something?
I I don't know. That's why I, I'm asking you that question.
So why, why would we say that we did when we're unaware that we may have missed something?
I mean, do you.
So it's, it goes hand in hand with good faith negotiation, that if you have a deficiency which you have identified, we will certainly make good on it. But I'm.
Which that.
I find it difficult to agree to a gotcha clause.
There's no gotcha clause because you already executed that agreement. You already executed the agreement. You are, I mean, all an agreement is, is promise.
What, I guess, let's, let's back the bus up here, and what are you trying to get at?
I, I think that this is a red line confession that you have not been following the agreement.
That's your interpretation.
I, listen, I'm not trying to interpret anybody's intent, but when I see what is very, I mean, as far as vanilla things in this resolution, the most vanilla is that you have been fulfilling the terms of the agreement because you already are under that agreement. Can you please stop interrupting me? So you're already under that that agreement. You already promised to those promises. So I'm just asking, have you, are you going to do that? Have you done that? And you're like, well, we will do it, but we don't know if we have.
We believe we have. But if there's something that is missing, we'd be glad to comply.
I think that the agreement that you guys signed with the Commissioners back in two thousand eighteen, there was no, there was no guardrails and no consequence. You know, if you go over thirty five miles an hour, there's a consequence. There's a police officer there. You get a ticket and so on. So there was no consequence with the two thousand eighteen agreement, which I was a Commissioner at the time. So with this, we, you know, thanks to Commissioner Brinkley with these guidelines that there's a consequence for this, this, or that, you know? And maybe to get to move forward, if we would change the language to, from this day forward, because no one gave you consequences before.
There, there is a consequence, and that is breaching the agreement. That's the consequence.
And that's, that's your intent is to find a breach.
I, it is not my intent to follow a breach. My intent.
Where's the, where's the goodwill here for a joint county?
Goodwill? You sent me an agreement this morning to look at. What, I mean, what are we talking about?
Last week, you co-practiced with.
Same exact, after those.
Nothing, we didn't even get so much as a written copy.
Let me explain something to you. Do you understand the difference between a resolution and an agreement?
Government is not my business.
That's fair. Okay, so let me explain it to you. So a resolution is a unilateral motion. It's essentially a legislative action of the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
We only sign that. That's what we did last week. That's a unilateral, a unilateral document. Okay?
Sure.
So you are not a party to that document. There's no, there's no, you know, sign here, Airport Authority. An agreement, that is a bilateral, bilateral understanding between two parties. Both parties sign the agreement. Both parties make promises to one another. So that's what we're doing here. I mean, that's what you sent, I mean, that I received this morning. So that's something you sign and I sign. We both make promises to each other. We both have responsibilities and obligations under that. That is, do you understand how that's different than a resolution?
Sure.
Okay, so you know, when you said you got the resolution last minute, you are not a party to the resolution. You are a party to this agreement. I am a party to this.
We were asked to come and without ever seen.
I mean, I don't.
We stood, we stood right here.
Yes.
I, I was fine with it.
The Commissioners were trying to come to a vote in whether or not we could live with these unusual conditions that were, again, brought in.
Unusual. You think following the terms of the agreement that you already executed.
You wanted to control the salary of our, our one employee.
Listen, we're giving you eight hundred thousand dollars. I, so I read, let me see where I have, I found the terms. These are like, well, so first of all, this is your application for the FAA. This is like seventy two pages. I looked at the FAA assurances that you have to make for any grants. These are nineteen pages. We asked you guys to sign or to agree to one little paragraph, not seventy two pages, not nineteen pages, one paragraph. And one of those things is just, have you been following the terms of the agreement we're already under? And that's the one you're like, can't do that. Do you see how that would be problematic to me?
Well, we're, we're essentially a county function attempting to negotiate good faith with county Commissioners. We believe we have complied, but if we have not, we will make good on it.
Okay, so if you believe you complied, you should accept the terms.
Yeah, it's never been notified that we have not been in compliance. So as far as we know, we are.
That's fair. So if you believe that in good faith, that you have been complying with the terms of the agreement, you should accept the terms as originally presented in our resolution, which we have already passed.
May I ask a question of Mr. DeBork?
Sure, I mean.
Jim, you mentioned that if we busted the speed limit, we would get a ticket.
Right.
What's the ticket here? If we, if we busted the speed limit?
Well, it says in the resolution where eight hundred thousand dollars, if you don't do this, this, and this, then it turns into a loan. That's the consequence.
That's moving, moving, but our goal is moving forward.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yes, moving forward.
Right. Yeah. So that's a consequence.
Right.
So.
Right.
Before, nobody knocked on your door, sent you an email, says, hey, you're not following this item, whatever it is.
Okay.
You never received that from you know, anybody. No. If we hadn't been following something, I would have been more than happy to provide whatever was necessary. And looking back at some of the emails over the years that I've sent with things like annual reports, I've asked if there's any additional requirement to meet, and was told that, no, what I provided was fine. So I was under the impression that I am providing the information that's required as part of the agreement.
When was the last time you read the agreement between yourself and?
A couple of weeks ago.
What about you, John? Have you ever read the agreement operating?
Last week.
Okay.
I reviewed it last week.
After session, I assume.
Well, actually, before, but.
Okay. I, I have a real problem with giving you eight hundred thousand dollars, and you won't even say that you've been complying with the terms of the contract.
We're playing a word game here because we believe we have.
Okay, then agree to it.
And and is, are you, as Commissioners, are you aware of any violation of the agreement?
I am not, but.
Mr. DeBork, are you aware of anything? Has there been any notice served to the Airport Authority that we have violated that agreement in any shape or form?
No. No.
Adrian is, you're in the room.
No, I'm not aware of anything.
Now with the financials, do you sit with Adrian once a year? I think one of you guys said it.
Well, I think, you know, as, as I look at the, I, I wasn't around when the airport agreement was made back in two thousand eighteen. And I, I think it's a, it's a flawed document in that it, it doesn't define things well enough. I mean, we could have done a better job. This is, you know, this is looking backwards. You know, for example, we talked about defining an expense, maintenance versus a capital item. These are, these are real world terms that we need to grapple with. And all we want to do is run the best airport in the state of Ohio. And so, you know, that's one of the things that we should, we should really focus on is that agreement, making sure it's current with the beliefs and the wishes that you have, and we would gladly comply. It's just, it's just that simple.
So you will gladly comply.
Absolutely.
You have.
Moving forward.
We believe we have, and we will continue.
I feel like this is almost like a husband and wife. I'm like, the wife feels like the husband's cheating on her. She's like, promise you've never cheated on me. And he's like, listen, I never will in the future cheat on you. That's kind of what it feels like to me, that you guys like, well, promise you've been following it. But you're like, listen, in the future, we're not going to cheat on the agreement.
But to the best of your knowledge, you haven't because you haven't received any documentation from our administrator.
Right.
So, so then you should agree to our original resolution that we passed last week, if you don't think there's been any breaches of the agreement.
Well, this, this is a matter of trust.
In the past.
Yes, I agree.
In both directions.
The best, the best predictor of future performance is past performance.
You're insinuating that we haven't done something.
I, you're insinuating that by redlining the agreement.
We have not. We have not.
You haven't.
We have never been told we haven't.
Okay, so then, then I think we should make, we should go with the resolution that we passed last week.
Why, why, why would you not allow a cure period in a contract? I mean, in the world of business, you do joint ventures, you do corporate acquisitions, you do all these things. There's always a cure period within that. Why would you not allow that?
Okay, so we, as Commissioners, have the ability to do that in our discretion. So right now, the discretion lies with.
Well, you're writing a contract.
Can you have me finish, please? So that discretion lies with us. And depending on what the breach is, there, there is a breach where it would be so egregious that we would be like, no, there's no cure period. We need to move forward. And so by.
If you'd like to, excuse me.
This is, this is getting challenging, isn't it? So you, so the way it's written now, that discretion lies with us. And that discretion lies with us because we are getting, or we are giving you eight hundred thousand dollars, and we aren't getting anything in return. I mean, you're going to tell me you're building infrastructure, but let's be real, it's for eight private planes for seven rich guys, right? So that's not really something that benefits the county in a whole. And so because of that, we need to have power on our side of the dais. And one way we do that is we get to decide if a cure period is appropriate or not.
May it, that the money is for the T-hanger, which over the life of that building will generate seven point five million dollars for the.
I've never seen those numbers because you've never given them to.
We have, we emailed them to you last week.
The only thing I've heard as far as like what the maintenance costs and so forth are based on Mr. Forrest's resolution.
I can provide.
That's, I, I saw like our, I think, numbers regarding what the cost of the project is. But I don't think I've seen like, what are the maintenance costs of it? What are the rent costs? I don't, I don't.
Seeing it or not, that building will generate seven point five million dollars of income to the county for a Commissioners of County.
Not for the county, it's for you. It's for the Airport Authority because that's how the agreement's written.
It's a county asset.
We are the county.
We are the county. It is a county asset. That seven point five million dollars is to benefit the county because then that will relieve the County Commissioners of having to assist the airport to upgrade buildings. That's what we're after here.
But your responsibility is maintaining buildings for the terms of the contract.
We're going in circles, chasing our tail. Yeah. May I, may I review the justification for the, for the here?
Sure.
Hanger Bravo at Geogga County is a once in a decade opportunity. We will attract new airplanes to the airport, will not only pay a hangar rent, but also purchase fuel. This additional rent for the very first time will allow proper maintenance for the facility, the grounds, the hangars, et cetera, and the UH helicopter ambulance living space. We have never had this level of money before to do maintenance. And again, back to the two thousand eighteen agreement, it really kind of ignores capital versus maintenance. Once this, this is a once in a decade opportunity, and here's why. The GCA normally funds airport improvements via FAA funds plus a small required match from ODOT, you know, the kind of and we do it in the form of entitlements and competitive grants. The FAA will never pay for hangars, hangar aprons, or general upkeep of our airport. They did have a airport terminal fund, but it largely went to big airports with commercial airlines. As a result of COVID, the BIL fund was created by Congress to add infrastructure spending to the states for airports. This funding will be spent regardless of which state or which county gets the money. So it's a competitive grant. The BIL fund covered a broader scope of shovel-ready infrastructure, which would support other types of airport facilities not normally covered under FAA policy. So we, as a result, the GCA won five hundred and eighty five thousand dollar BIL grant for Geogga County spread over three years for the purpose of building Hanger Bravo. The grant will expire in annual increments starting in April of two thousand twenty five. Thus, the urgency to approve the county's eight hundred thousand dollar to fully fund the project. We have a low bidder who is under the engineering estimate. And if this project is delayed, future inflation and building materials will certainly affect the affordability of this project, and we all know inflation is coming. What are the benefits to Geogga County? In the first year of operation, the hangar will produce forty eight thousand dollars in rent revenue plus fuel sales revenue for these additional airplanes. This will help fund maintenance spending. Assuming proper maintenance, and it is a modern building, a fifty-year useful life is conservatively estimated. We must note that hangers four and five are over sixty years old and started life as relocated turkey coops. These are, these are chicken.
It could have looked like it.
They certainly do. Assuming an inflation factor, rent increase of four percent annually, which has been our practice, we can do more if necessary. And then compounding it in a hundred percent occupancy, Hanger Bravo would return almost seven point four million of revenue over the estimated useful life. In simple payback terms, the rent revenue will return the eight hundred thousand dollar investment in approximately thirteen years. We should assume that a replacement roof will be needed somewhere towards the latter part of its lifespan. A replacement roof would only extend the useful life of this valuable asset built with twenty twenty five dollars. You can only imagine fifty years from now what that building will be worth in terms of building it. So the annual revenue rates for Hanger Bravo will include an accrual for future maintenance. The bottom line is, as a result of county funding for Hanger Bravo, Geogga would finally have the resources to properly fund the long-term maintenance for the grounds and the facilities. Geogga County is one of the few airports in Ohio that runs a break-even to positive income statement with one part-time manager and host of unpaid volunteers. Our airport and our culture is well-regarded in northeast Ohio and strongly support the business of Geogga County. So as a financial investment, it's a slam dunk. You, you spend eight hundred thousand dollars for a county facility that over its fifty-year lifespan returns a revenue stream of seven billion dollars plus, which will fund the maintenance for your airport.
So I have some questions about the grant application, if we could turn to that. So I noticed on the request for action, I don't know the right one up, but it, you know, it lists that the eight hundred thousand is the local match to receive this five hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. But then when I look at the FAA application, I see the local match is only thirty thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty nine dollars. So could you talk about that?
There are certain expenses that are FAA-eligible for reimbursement. When FAA does reimburse those expenses, they will do so at ninety percent, and then there's a percentage that doesn't fall into that. That's that thirty thousand.
So does that mean then that the local match for you to get a five hundred and eighty five is really only that thirty thousand dollars?
Yes.
That's correct. So we don't need to give you eight hundred thousand dollars for you to get this five hundred and eighty five thousand dollar grant. We only need to give you that thirty thousand as the local match.
Yeah, can't build a building without the money.
Yeah, but without that, then then.
Well, I mean.
Project falls flat.
Where, where else have you looked for funding for it? Have you asked the, the people in the waitlist to put up money? Have you done a fundraiser?
In December, we thought we had the. we thought we had the money that there was no need to go find elsewhere. We've been scrambling since then to try to put this deal together. And with your requirements and, and, and things like that, we have not had time to seek alternate funding.
Because what I thought was interesting, so I went through these FAA assurances for our airport and they have like a whole paragraph on this that talks about hangar construction and, um, building a hangar at the aircraft owner's expense. There's like a whole like heart in this, these documents. I thought that, that seems to be more of the typical financing model. From what I can tell is that these actual airplane owners are the ones financing it, not the taxpayers who are never going to accept.
Okay, a lot of that development that takes place with private money is called through the fence. In other words, it's not sitting on airport property.
Okay.
Uh, so it's, as any person could invest our own money, build a hangar, charge rent and do it through the fence operation. We don't have anything set up in that regard. So I, I question to the commissioners is, uh, I, week after week, week we watch you approve monies for uh, the, the county fairgrounds, for airports, for all the facilities within the county. Uh, are we the only operation that runs at break even?
You don't run at break even. You get money from taxpayers. You get FAA money. You get money from the cap, from the.
Well, the FAA grants are as a result of our work.
But those, that's taxpayer money. Those are, that's taxpayer money. That's still not money you're.
Right, we are a county function. Correct?
You, you are under the.
For, for, for a break even operation, we maintain that facility for you. I, 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 I'm, I'm speechless here in terms of the, the kickback.
Do you, do you not understand the difference? Like if we are putting money in like, let's say office space, those are our employees that are fulfilling statutory functions of government and they are here five days a week. Do you see how that's different than eight private airplanes in a hangar?
Well, the eight private hangars will provide the revenue of seven million plus to maintain your airport. It's a slam dunk. I mean.
You're already supposed to be maintaining airports. You're already supposed to be maintaining the airport.
Well, if we don't, again, the agreement fails to recognize that we do not produce enough income to properly maintain your airport.
But I mean, I want to bring this up, but you could produce more income by charging to keep it your.
We're talking about rounding errors.
I, I, I don't think so. If you've got, I mean, so one of my other questions about this application, as I noticed it refers to this hangar waitlist, which was the last page. And this, it says it's from twenty nineteen. And then there's another date that says update at twenty twenty-three. But there's only nineteen people on this and I've been given a waiting list where there's thirty-two people. And then I think these are different people that are slotted for this Bravo hangar. Is that correct? So how many people are on the waitlist?
I'm not sure which list that, uh, we included in there. I think that was just for specifically for that hangar.
For that.
The waiting list is a moving, maybe people move in and move out all the time.
I took four people off this week and added five more.
Okay.
What, what occurs is that people are trying to get on the list so they could purchase an airplane and then come to Jagga County. If they haven't purchased the airport, or I'm sorry, if they haven't purchased the airplane, they may still be on the list. Or, and, and one occurred last week, a guy go on an airplane, we have no space for him, he moved to portage. So it's very dynamic.
Of the five people on the airport committee, who was here in two thousand eighteen?
I believe three. Chip, then.
I don't recall who else was on the board at the time. I was on the board of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, because I'm just referring to, I wasn't here, Mr. Breaker wasn't here in two thousand and eighteen. And, um, I, I see your frustration with, you don't know what you don't know about what happened from eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever. And, uh, so, and understand that, uh, you know, you don't want to be in a gotcha moment. And.
It's always, yeah. Make us aware of what we need to do, we'll do it.
Understand, I mean, there is no gotcha moment. There is no gotcha moment.
The trust isn't there.
I, on either side, I think, sir.
I, I, I.
I mean, listen, you're refusing, you're refusing to promise that you followed your promises. Do you see how that is problematic for me as I am handing you eight hundred thousand dollars?
Well, with these new conditions of, you know, if we could just put from this date forward, because half the board wasn't there in two thousand and eighteen, because we now have conditions, guardrails of the consequences if they don't do this, this or that.
But, but Mr. Burke, there was already, there were already consequences because they already signed this agreement. This is a pre-existing agreement. And there are consequences, which is breaking the law if they don't follow it. And that's a brief, a breach of contract if they don't follow it. So that, there are consequences in place. This is, I am not joking when I say this is the most vanilla part of the, of this whole resolution is that they promised that they fulfilling their previous promises. And if they are not willing to say that to taxpayers, we should not be giving them this money. And I think it's absolutely reckless to do so.
We are witnessing a lot of very careless language.
I'm talking about the commissioners being reckless. I'm not talking about you. You guys get very sensitive about some of these words.
I think we need a little time to, uh, have our suggestions from the prosecutor on the agreement and, uh, if we want to tweak the, uh, resolution or not. So if you guys can go back next week, I'm sure we'll have it figured out. We just got some information from you guys yesterday or last night.
Moving forward, Jim, how do you want us to communicate with comments? Because we, everything we have from either the board or our legal counsel goes through Linda?
Goes through Linda and then she'd send us, uh, an email.
Well, except if it's something on the agenda, it needs to go through Krusty.
Well, yeah, they.
Yeah.
They work, Linda and Krusty work, work hand in hand.
Right. So since December, when we had an approved agreement, um.
Never had an agreement.
There was no agreement.
We did approve funding, approve funding in December. A resolution.
It was dependent on an agreement that was never signed.
Right. And so we're effectively doing a terrific job of running out the clock. We're going to lose this money if we don't do this by next week.
I'll make a motion to put that thirty thousand dollars in your bank.
You're talking about the eight hundred.
Well, I'm just saying that would allow you, if, I mean, your argument, so I was never aware that, that you only need thirty thousand dollars to apply for this grant. It always seemed to me, I mean, we were told it was.
No, we have, we have to have the full funding in, in force. The thirty thousand is just the FAA required match.
Okay.
But if we don't have the full funding for the hangar, it's, it's, there's no point in applying for it.
But as far as our part, you only need, you only need the thirty and change from us.
No.
No. We, we can't go forward with an application for a grant if we don't have the full funding in force.
Okay, I understand.
For our consultant, Michael Baker.
Okay.
And they're extremely expert, they have expertise in these types of matters. Based upon the decision was made in December, we expended engineering, architectural services. We've got quite investment already. So we would lose that amount of money.
Yep.
And, and my thought process was to get the airport authority board into a, uh, making money to put it back into the buildings.
Exactly.
And again, it's the taxpayers' buildings, property. Our names are on the deed as commissioners, wherever the commissioners may be over the years. And, uh, it's, it's a revenue source to continually make improvements on the old buildings that used to be chicken or turkey coops at one time, sixty years ago.
Plus the UH living quarters, new doors. We've got lots of things to do, which we've had before this board for many years requesting funding.
I mean, didn't, but didn't this board give you like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the UH hangar?
For the hangar. Correct.
Three eighty.
Yes, that's correct.
Because UH was really wanting it, they communicated, UH communicated with their group and us. And, uh, I feel more comfortable with the, uh, H, you know, helicopter from UH in Jagga County versus having an Orwell or Garretsville. Because every minute means something when somebody has a car accident or whatever.
No, absolutely. I mean, I do think that, that's an asset to our, our community, no doubt. Um, but I mean, they're the only ones that are paying for our rent as far as I can tell from this spreadsheet. They're paying ten times more than some other people are.
They have ten times more space.
It's simply based on square footage.
The tallest thing.
It's all square footage.
But along with the, what was it, a sixteen percent increase that we put through?
Uh, effective.
When we fix the building.
Also, we put what nearly a hundred thousand into that hangars in addition to what you guys did.
Yeah. So now we have an asset that will serve the county through UH for another fifty years.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll come back to you with, on the hangers four and five, you know, these old chicken coops. We spend ninety grand to throw some new roofs on there. Uh, we will extend the revenue stream for another twenty years. Which again, these revenue streams fund the maintenance, uh, for the facility. Uh, you know, as you looked at the asset list within our more recent thing, we, we have old tractors to cut the, to cut the grass. We have equipment that's been donated. Everything in that building is practically donated. So we run on a shoestring here. And as the, as the facilities age out, just as you approved for all the other wonderful employees here, you know, sure, we'll put a new roof on, sure, we'll put a new boiler and sure, we'll do this. How is this different? It's a county facility. It's a county asset.
I want to continually maintaining the buildings and getting some, some kind of revenue stream.
We have one employee. How many departments do you have with one employee? And the rest of us putting in twenty, thirty hours a week to make this happen.
Okay, so moving on to procedurally, the, the prosecutor's office needs to approve the agreement. And if there's, to the extent there's a change in our resolution, they need to revisit the agreement. Would, do you want to talk to that, Sarah?
Um, and, and that's fine. We just want the agreements, the resolution and the agreement to reflect the, the intention of the board. So, uh, I mean, obviously, as you indicated in light of the fact that, um, the airport has made some additional revisions, we just need to make sure that everything, um, you know, obviously is consistent and in line towards intent.
Do we, do we have a comment to say we'll get this reviewed quickly?
Um, you're, you're not her boss.
No, I'll ask you to ask her then, please.
I, I mean.
Well, we, we've had massive delays from the prosecutor's office on prior. I mean, the facts speak for themselves.
I think the prosecutor's office knows it's, it's, we're in a time crunch.
And can we have our attorney to the prosecutor's office directly? Work these details out?
I don't have any issue with that.
What's that?
I have no issue with that.
Okay.
Please, please do.
Okay.
I think that'd probably be more efficient.
Yes.
So we'll do everything we can to have it as ready for next week. And it will probably not just be the agreement and a potentially amended resolution, but it'll also be the application. Cause we have some questions that need to be sorted out with that as well.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm confused. What do we, so I thought we were just acknowledging this agreement, but then I'm told we need to sign parts of the.
The assurances.
Okay, so.
Those would have to be signed at some point.
Cause it's not listed as a co-sponsor in there.
Well, that's when we receive the grant offer that you will sign, your attorney will review it, we will sign, our attorney will review it.
So this is just the application? When the grant comes through, that's the final documents all get acknowledged by everybody.
Traditionally, the applications comes strictly from the airport.
Okay, so then why do we need to sign? Are we a co-sponsor or are we not a co?
Yeah, that's right. You're a co-sponsor of the airport and on the grant itself.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep walking down this road because it all needs to be done by next week.
Yes.
And then we would need the resolution back from you that gives Chip the ability to actually execute it.
That was, that's they, they provided the airport authority to the action to authorize Chip to do that. The commissioners have to do the action on their side.
Right.
So we, but we did that.
Yeah, we did that.
They have, they have.
And I believe we, I sent you a resolution for them, for the application.
I just need some confirmation on a couple of things in there. I'm not sure if it's fiscal year twenty-four, because that was left in there from the previous position. So that's, that's a question that.
I'll have to get clarification on that because it's monies that go back to twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Multiple, I don't know if that might just be something that just.
So it'd be quite a bit of stuff next week and we'll run herd on it as best we can to get that together.
Appreciate it.
Laura, if I can make, ask you a question real quick, if I, would it be, would it be okay if we were to make a motion to, so that we would, you know, lock in the funds to have that transfer done to the, um, airport construction fund? That we could do that today so that the money would be committed, that they could get that application at least moving forward? And then we could get the rest of the stuff cleaned up later?
Um, and again, it, it's a, it's a challenge to the board. It just reflects the board's intent. So if, I mean, if the board intends to to transfer the money prior to having an agreement in place, I, I mean, that's obviously up to the board, but.
I would feel comfortable making a motion to transfer the eight hundred thousand dollars. And then you know that that fund is committed and then move forward because I think we're at risk. We're at risk of losing over half a million dollars.
The only issue is, of course, the resolution in the agreement will govern the use of the funds. So monies are transferred.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think that we all.
We made a decision last week, Mr. Dorak, to make the transfer contingent on that resolution. And so we should not back down on that.
And is it my understanding too, that you will hold on to the funds and we will come as we did today to ask for the reimbursement?
You know, the, the original intent of this was to be able to just transfer the money to the airport authority and then you manage the, uh, payment of the, the contractors with that money.
Okay, I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And Adrian mentioned that last week too. I, I recall, you must have missed it or.
So then, does my motion die with no second?
Correct.
You know, and all I could say is, is I, 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 I give you guys an enormous amount of credit being volunteer board. And, um, you know, it, it's, it's, uh, to, to me, we have had a, an agreement in place since two thousand and eighteen. Um, there's never been a, an issue. You guys have had also, um, audits that have come through the airport where the state auditors have actually, you know, come in to review stuff. I can't remember what year it was, but I know that, you know, every year they pick a certain, certain department. Nothing has ever been flagged to me, um, that there's been any kind of inconsistencies. If there's anything the potential of just, you know, everybody there is volunteer and Rick is part-time that the, um, you know, might be a delay, but it's just, it's, uh, it, 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 it's hard for me to sit, to sit up here and listen to this knowing how much you guys have committed to what you, to what you do. I think you guys are a lot stronger than I am to be able to hang in the fight. So I would have thrown the towel in a long time ago and said, have at it. And you guys figure it out. Um, you know, at the end of the day, it's a county asset. It's our, you know, our county buildings that we ultimately own and, and have made a, 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 a huge, huge pass at improvements. We've, we've done a lot of things to make that place safer. Um, and, um, I just think that, uh, you know, if, if all of our, uh, if, if all of our departments ran with the amount of minimal investment of what we do with the airport, I mean, our taxes would be virtually nothing. So, um, you know, we keep on going down this whole thing of, you know, county tax dollars. I'd really like to try to zero down to the what, you know, the ninety-six thousand people of what we actually, you know, pay into the airport, what that comes to per person.
Fourteen cents per year.
Fourteen cents per year. So, you know, fourteen cents per year, um, to, to look at that of what it gives for business community, you know, education for kids, some of the pilot programs that you have for the youth, the, uh, you know, the, the rides that are, are, are given to introduce kids to aviation out there. It's a, I think it's a, an incredibly small price to pay that I think that we can, uh, mix words to make it sound like, uh, the taxpayers are absolutely getting fleeced. That's not the case here. mix words to make it sound like uh, the taxpayers are absolutely getting fleeced. That's not the case here. And um, and and I commend you guys. I commend you guys for your patience and your um, strong will and um, you know, and and also for the fact that, you know, we had a uh, agreement that we felt was very strong in, in December.
There was an agreement.
Or that, we, we had a, a motion to fund you guys to a point that would have made that airport that much stronger. And um, I just um, thank you. Thank you very much. And and um, tip my hat off to your guys' patience and endurance in this matter. And at the same time, I also apologize for some of the word exchange. And I know that um, you guys are professionals. And I don't um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like some of the, you know, statements that, that have been made, but um, every commissioner, I guess, can speak for themselves of what they want to say to you, but I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. See you next week.
Do we need to table the uh, item fifteen?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table um, item fifteen and.
Second.
Mr. Spittley.
Hi.
Mr. Chris.
All right.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to ask, because Ralph said something about movement of money into the airport authorities. Adrian, you already moved eight hundred thousand dollars into the airport construction.
No, I, I've just set up appropriations.
Appropriations.
No cash has been transferred yet from the general fund into the airport construction fund. I was waiting until after today to, to do that.
Okay.
Or not do it as the case may be.
Okay.
More discussion.
Last week, uh, Commissioner Spittley brought up concerns around the uh, First Energy Middlefield Office possibly closing. Um, I had a couple of conversations with Mr. Conley, who is sort of a government liaison. And um, we drafted a, a letter and sent it to all three of you and um, we're just waiting to hear if that's something you want us to go ahead and send. I don't know, does that require an action or okay?
Did you, did my red lines get to?
Yes.
Okay. Rick, did you gentlemen have an opportunity to review them?
I reviewed it and they fell into the okay, I liked it.
Um, and then we also got copies of um, some support documents that we were going to send along with that letter to um, and I can show that to you.
Okay, I would want to see that before it goes out.
Yes.
So is there a motion to send the letter out? With.
Well, can I hear about the support documents first?
I left them on my desk and because we were at talks right till I put them together with me.
I understand.
Um, but I can show them to you after. I will say I did consult with Roger as well. And he did assure us that if this um, if this office is in fact closed, he feels that the locations of the Lake County and then whatever the other one was, this Portage County, I don't know. Is close enough to us that we would still get reasonable service from those areas that we don't have to be afraid. Not having it will leave us without coverage. So, letter is excellent. I didn't, I wrote one, but it got significantly fixed. And um, I thought it was a, a real great letter and we'll put these things together. I can show you the documents that we have also received from other places in support of this.
A great fax and details in the letter, so.
Yeah, I also, I added a little bit of teeth to it because um, First Energy has a base distribution rate case before the PUCO. And if they close this facility, I said we would file public comment in that rate case.
So make note that that's included in the letter.
If, I mean, we could take it out if you want, but that does give it a little bit of teeth because that's something that they want to pass. Um, and part of that rate case, as they said, they were making these various cuts um, without impacting service, but it doesn't seem like that would probably be possible.
Well, if you close the service office, that might affect service.
Well, exactly. Yeah. So I mean, that's kind of my point. So if, I mean, I think we could file a comment that's saying, hey, you made these promises in your rate case, but um, but you closed the middle to the service office and we are unhappy about that. Um, and the PUCO would weigh our letter, so. Just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to flag that part to make sure you gentlemen are okay with it.
I'm fine.
So the person that um, that she's referring to was prepared to go, um, they have five copies available. If you are interested in being forward with approving and executing the letter to um, CEI or any of the closure of the Littlefield Service Office.
I'll make the motion to approve the letter.
Mr. Spittley?
I have special.
Yes.
Uh, the challenge there is that we have four people to send it to. And if you only sign it to one person.
The, the letter is written to CEI and at the bottom of the letter is the copies of the additional three agencies that was recommended to be sent to.
Was, was it sent to the president? Who's that one addressed to?
Florence.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted. Because he's the decision maker in it. So we just want it to go to him and then the others.
Bottom will get. Where there's C's at the. Right here, it says that it would go to John Hawkins, the Vice President of Evacuations, Toby Thomas, Chief Operating Officer, and Wendy Zeeley, the local engagement specialist as well. So a copy of each one of the letters will be sent to those people as well. That's five there's. Five. One for our office, for our records and then one for each of them.
Very good. Anything else on the board discussion?
No.
Move out comment.
Any public comment at this time?
Uh, okay, we're receiving good women voters. Um, we noticed on the agenda the discussion possibly of videotaping the commissioners meetings. And we just wanted to give our support for that. We have, um, I've been covering these meetings for five years. And although there's several news media individuals here and private group that um, posts a video, it is, I think, really important to have that public video posted because there's really no substitute for being able to see for yourself uh, what is happening. So we really urge you to continue to practice. Um, there's hundred and fifty people that look at it every week and I'm sure that will be growing. So thank you for doing it and I hope you continue doing it.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'm Steve Hairston, on the Oats Trail. Um, last week I saw for the first time the video and I found it easy to access. Was grateful it was available. The meeting did go long. When I logged in, there were twenty three people watching and at the end of the meeting, comment was there were three people watching. The two hour meeting was, was tedious to sit through, but people are looking at that. I'm glad it's there. So, thanks.
Thanks, thanks for your comment. Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm motion to adjourn.
Second.